My mother died and I started like two weeks after that.
For a minute.
Okay. Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Lunenburg zoning board of appeals. I do have to give you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law broadcast over the Lunenburg public access. I will also note that everybody has their mask on, that we all have to wear mask in the public buildings now until further notice. With that, I'd like to introduce the members. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I'm Alfred Gravel. This is James Bezakowski, David Blatt.
I'm sorry.
Hans Winthrop, David Blatt, Patrick Callahan, and Tony Nacastro. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. If you would like to speak, please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. The board will go into deliberation tonight, and there are required findings for any special permit, and they are that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic flow congestion, danger of fire or explosion or other reasons, that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood, that it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use, which this is, that it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
This is an application for a special permit, Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, zoning board of appeals. Name and address of the applicant is Lunenburg Auto Center, 36 Summer Street in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby applies as follows: To operate and auto repair and used auto sales at 36 Summer Street. Auto repair would be 17 cars. Sales, 53 cars. And employee parking would be six cars. The proposed action has begun. The basis for this application is following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 4BL1. The street address is 36 Summer Street in Lunenburg. Assessors map 115, parcel eight. The name and address of legal holder to the land which is the subject of this case is Peter M. Kelly, LLC, 36 Summer Street in Lunenburg. And the deed is recorded in West Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 7171, page 353, and recorded May 7, 2010. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates permitted. In May of 2012, a special permit was granted for auto sales and repairs. In December of 2019, a special permit was granted for Lunenburg Auto Center. This is specifically a name change, ownership change of the business. The special permit questions and answers are as follows. A: Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply: The majority of the work will be performed inside the existing garage bays and away from the public. There is ample room on the lot to allow for cars and delivery trucks to enter without affecting traffic on Summer Street. There is also ample room when exiting the lot to see in both directions to avoid traffic problems. The work being performed should not have any fire and/or explosion hazards stemming from it. B: Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply: The surrounding pieces of property are mostly commercial. Therefore, I do not see any adverse material effects on the local community. C: Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? The reply: All storage of materials and parts will be inside the building to limit any unsightliness to the general public. Also, most of the repair work will be performed inside the service bays to further limit the impact of the public. D: Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply: The majority of the work will be done inside the service bays. There should be very little, if any, noise, dust, vibration, smoke, odor, heat, or glare produced by the work performed at this location. Only minor diagnostic tests and road tests will be performed outside in view of the general public. And that was submitted and signed by Jose Iris de Oliveira Jr. of 69 Plain Street, Lowell, Mass. There is a rendering of the auto repair, parking, the cars for sale, and the employee parking, and there's also a rendering of the lots, and a letter from Peter Kelly of 36 Summer Street, Lunenburg, who's authorized and landowner of 36 Summer Street hereby authorize and permit Jose Iris de Oliveira Jr. to apply for a special permit through the town of Lunenburg for the proposed use at the above location. And that's signed by Peter M. Kelly on November 24, 2021. There is also a list of butters attached, a site plan from the assessors office, and the previous granting to Lunenburg Auto Center on December 18, 2019. I also have a letter from the building official, Casey Burlingame. I have reviewed the application and have the following comments. Property is in question is parcel ID 115-8 listed as 36 Summer Street. It is in the commercial district. In addition, this property is part of the Summer Street Revitalization District. The property in question is currently being used as an automotive repair facility and automotive sales facility. The special permit was granted by the zoning board of appeals on December 18, 2019 for these uses. The proposed use is the same as the previous use with the new tenant. This change requires a new special permit under condition number nine of the 2019 special permit language. Upon visiting the site, it was made clear that there were vehicles displayed that were within 20 feet of the street. This would appear to be a violation of condition number three of the 2019 special permit. In addition, a concrete business appears to be using part of the site to store a large form truck and multiple concrete forms. This can be seen from the street directly to the right of the automotive facility. There was no language regarding such a business on the 2019 special permit. And I have an email that I received today from Peter Kelly, the owner of the property, to Mr. Alfred Gravel, chairman of the zoning board. My sincerest apology for not being able to attend this meeting. CDS Concrete has been using this area for approximately 3.5 years. I believe he was there when the last zoning approval was granted for this property. I hope that his equipment being there doesn't have an adverse effect on the zoning board's decision for the used car auto repair request at the meeting. I appreciate all, any and all consideration in this matter. Thank you sincerely, Peter M. Kelly, 36 Summer Street. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant or his representative to speak to the matter. You come up to the mic, give your name and address, please.
Jose Iris de Oliveira Jr., 69 Plain Street, Lowell. I just come to him for a little bit of time, you know what I mean? He's my friend, I work with him, I'm managing right there. You know, I think I speak a little bit better about him, you know? Just for a guy to be more comfortable. And just be there for, I don't know, what kind of cash you guys have, and I don't leave for them. All right?
Did he give his name and address?
No.
Could we have your name and address, please?
My name?
Yes.
My name is Anderson Libori Santana. I live in Fitchburg, Daniel Street, 435, Daniel Street.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so you're going to be the new owner?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I have a few questions. I don't know if you're going to know the answer to this, but is the current owner still there and running the business? Do you know?
Sorry.
The current owner, the previous owner, is he still there and running the business at this time?
He's sick, so he's going out and he'll be the only owner right now.
Okay, so there's nobody running it at this time?
He's still there, but he's sick, so we are managing and he's there just sometimes, not every day.
Okay.
And until we, after we got the license, he'll be out.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the, there is a, there's currently CND foundations to the right of the side of the building, as the building inspector pointed out and as I observed when I went down there to do a site visit. It takes up a lot of area on that, in fact, all the area on the right side of the building. What you're proposing shows the cars are all parked in that area as part of your plan, and another part of your plan shows the auto repair cars parked behind the building. And what I observed is there's really no way to get to the back of the building with all that equipment there. There is a truck on the other side, a lift truck. There is like a concert hut, there is a bunch of, so looking at this, I would like you to address, is this concrete business going to go away when you take over? Do you know?
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, because, you know, I rent for a pillar, you know what I mean? I just need to make sure with him, he's going to stay there. But, you know, he's there for more than three years, you know what I mean? And, you know, never have like a problem with these guys, you know? All the time, try be nice. I don't need to move any car for he's going there because I have a lot of space. So I just going to make sure, see you guys want his move? See you guys want his move? I can't tell him like move, you know what I mean? But...
But for us, it's not a problem.
Yeah, for us, it's not a problem, you know?
Well, my opinion, of course, it's just my opinion, the rest of the board will have their own, is we would have to cut the amount of cars down significantly if you're going to leave that business there and take up all that space. With that, I'll actually open it up to all the board members because I'd like to get their questions. And with that, I will open it up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question, and it's kind of related to the same thing. So is it Mr. Kelly who's renting, is allowing the concrete folks to stay there? Or is it something that you guys, you know, the present owner has a relationship with the concrete folks?
No, it's with Kelly.
It's with Kelly, so it's up to Mr. Kelly. So Mr. Kelly's actually trying to rent, is looking to lease this to two separate companies then, at the same property? So I think that's not quite what we had when we granted the special permit.
No, it was not.
You know, for two businesses to be on that same location. So I think that's something we need to take up with Mr. Kelly.
That is correct, yes.
So your understanding is that once you take, that you have, you have the choice as to whether that concrete business stays there or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, for us, it's not a problem, but if for you guys is a problem, we will talk with Kelly and he will remove them. But for us, it's not a problem if they can still there, it's fine.
Yeah, you have a lot of space and you don't have many cars right now, you know? Not a problem at all.
I understand, but that's actually, it's, so this, we've granted a special permit for one purpose for this place?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then there was also the discussion about, and once again, if this concrete business has that thing, the proximity of vehicles to the road is a huge concern for us. We actually have another business that came to us, and they were actually too close to the road as well.
Yeah, too.
You know, that is a huge concern, and I'd like to see about, you know, if there's a way of rearranging the parking so that there might not be that tendency to get that close to the road.
Okay.
Yeah, we already fixed it, everything is not there anymore. We are just cleaning the lot, but now it's everything else. It's 50 feet away from the road, the cars.
Yeah, we will point out the permit calls for 20 feet from the, from the road.
Yes.
Which is roughly, they would have to be behind the sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. Other questions from the board?
That was it for me.
Well, even if the concrete business was there when we granted this permit, I think we were not aware of it being the exact time.
We weren't aware, and I don't believe it was there. I went down for a site visit. I don't recall ever seeing a concrete.
Our bylaws say that you cannot operate two businesses on the same lot, and it's very specific. And if you want, if they wanted to stay, or you wanted to let them stay, you would have to come before us again for a special addendum to your permit to allow them. But at this point in time, they're operating there illegally, regardless of whether or not, how long they've been there. So they should go, period, unless you come forward and ask for a special permission for them to stay.
Okay. All right.
Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make you aware that the 20 feet off from the road is 20 feet.
Okay.
It's not 20 feet today and 15 feet tomorrow.
Perfect.
They should stay within the guidelines of the permit.
Okay.
All right.
I'm sorry for that, I apologize, you know? Just wish for clean, you know what I mean? I know I have a lot of space, and right now, I'm going to respect like for the 20 feet, all right?
Where is the proposed customer parking for here? Is there an area that you're, you know, I know it shows existing pavement. Is that for customer parking? Or, you know, how would, how, what is the plan for that in here?
You can...
Do you need a copy? Do you need a copy of this if you wanted to point it out?
Yes, you guys can give a copy. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because right now, I don't have like the 53 cars right there, you know what I mean? Right now, I just have maybe like 20 cars and the whole total, you know what I mean, for sold. And it have a lot of space for the guys like parking, for the customers parking the car, you know what I mean? I don't have the exactly point for the customers park, you know what I mean? Because I have a lot of space right now. But I can figure it out in the front of the building, you know what I mean? I just less for the customers park because it's more easy for, you know, keep going and go back, you know what I mean? For don't have accident with my cars and with somebody else, you know what I mean? I just going to less the front of the build for the guys parking the front.
Okay. It just was, you know, I guess it's something to think about.
Yeah, just for make sure.
We definitely don't want the customers on the street.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So the auto repair business, is it going to stay there?
Yes.
What will be the hours of auto repair business?
The hours?
The hours you're going to work the auto repair?
Yeah, it's going to be like nine in the morning to five, you know? Yeah, just for fixing more my cars, you know what I mean? And the buy in the auction, sometimes comes a little problem, and fix a couple cars, you know what I mean? Like it's not crazy busy, but, you know?
So...
That's what they were.
Okay, just to let you know, the hours were 8:00 AM to 6:00.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to maintain that?
Yeah, stay 8 to 6, perfect.
Okay.
That was Monday through Saturday, so...
Monday through Saturday, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, so, so again, on the repairs, you're going to do both your own repairs for cars you're going to sell and public repairs?
Yeah.
But most of them is our repairs.
Yeah.
Okay. And what's the percentage, do you think, of auto, auto sales versus repairs? Is it like?
Do business, how do quantity percent of sales, quantity percent of the company? I don't know. I think we'll put 30, 70 of them, 70 of repair. And then we'll come to that. And then we'll tell them why you're running a lot of cars in there. So it was easy. Do you think we'll put 30% of our cars and 70%?
40, 60, I think.
40 for the road? 40 of ours?
No, we want to know how to, down Lunenburg Euro Center, we make sales and we make auto repair. Down Lunenburg Euro Center, what percent of the sales?
Then I think 60% of the sales and 40, right?
I think like 6% like sold cars and 40% and fix.
What is it again, please?
Like, I'm sorry for my, you know, I'm...
If you could speak into the mic.
Yeah, yeah, she... Okay. Like 60% like is going to be like for the cars for sold, and 40% and the cars I fix, you know what I mean? That's the whole total I make money, you know what I mean? 60% and sold cars, 40% and fixing cars.
Fixing and repairs, okay. Part of the reason I asked is you got a lot of the repairs parked out there. And again, I'm not quite sure how they're going to get out there. You've got 17 spots out there.
Yeah, I have many cars right now because I don't have mechanics for work. I just have one mechanic right now, you know, like I don't have nobody for work and be a little busy, you know, and stay right there. But I have another guy come work with me next week, he's going to fix everything, you know what I mean? And I'm going to stay like many cars like that.
Where's the, where are they going to get to the back of the building?
The back of what?
If this, if this concrete...
Access to it.
Oh, for access for the back? Yeah, I have on the left. The concrete guy, he's staying the right side, you know? Right side's for my front right now. And he's staying the right side, and I have access for the left side.
On the left side, I didn't really see, you know, you've got your customer parking, and then there was like a concert hut or something here. There was a big truck here with a crane, so I'm wondering how you're going to go this way.
Big crane, something like?
No, telling them.
Yeah, he's not there anymore.
He's not there anymore, but I have access from here.
Is that a grassy area or is it paved?
Grassy area.
Grassy, yeah.
Grass.
Yeah.
But the truck is not there anymore.
Oh, yeah, the truck is not there anymore.
The truck is gone.
Yeah, yeah.
It was there recently. Okay, that's fine if it's gone. So I'm just wondering if you're going to drive customer, customers' cars on the grassy area or to outback area? I didn't go back there, so I'm not sure. I'm sure that's not paved.
Yes, you're talking about, about the left side, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the left side is no, no customers' car right there. The customers' cars stay like...
No, I'm talking about the repairs, getting them to the back and then parking them out here.
Oh, for the repair.
Are they not, it's not paved back there either, is it?
A lot like cement or...
No, no.
So, so that's why, why I'm asking these questions is, you know, I'm not sure how you're going to get out to the back reasonably. I mean, if it's in the winter, are you going to plow that area?
Yeah, but I don't...
In the spring, if it's muddy, you're going to park customer cars out there?
The customers doesn't stay there.
Yeah.
There is just a car that is there for like two days, three days to fix, but it's not customer that stopped there to fix the car. The customer that stops there, he stops from the front of the building.
Okay, so those would be repairs you are doing for yourself.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Will there be sufficient room for fire vehicles and police vehicles to get back there? Because, you know, that's a very important consideration, and it's usually we have to make sure the police and fire have allowed sufficient room around the building for your safety as well as everyone else, so will there be sufficient room for that?
I, I'm just going to suggest this, it's, you don't have to do it. But we have the cars here next to the building, you have two rows of nine. I would suggest that you eliminate these next to the building where it is paved and you could drive out back, and it would be, you know, if you eliminated the four spots, it would be enough for fire apparatus, police, or anyone else. Because if there's a fire in the back and the fire department has to get to the back of that building, they're not going to go down that hill and around the grassy back.
All right, can I ask for him?
The public, they can't get to...
Yes.
...
All right. Okay. And the lighting in that area is adequate?
I'm so sorry.
Lighting.
Lighting is adequate?
No, no.
There's light, there's light, right?
Yeah, you have light in the night, yeah.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Any plans for Sunday at all?
You have a plan to work on it on the weekend?
No.
Do you want to make it so that you have plans for Sunday at all? Right now, it's sedating that you can only operate Monday through Saturday.
Okay.
So I'm asking you if you, in the future, have decided that you don't want a day off.
Yeah, maybe in the future, but no, no future like close, you know what I mean? No, in six months or one year. I don't have a plan for work at Sundays. I like Sundays off, you know? That's better.
I'm trying to just save you, save you a trip back if you wanted to.
Thank you, don't open Sunday, I don't want to work Sunday.
He's talking about if you want to include it now, so you don't have to go back here to include...
You can include it, you can include it, man.
That's fair, I don't... Even if you want to do...
Yes, you know, if you can be opening for Sunday, that's fine, maybe one Sunday for a month, you know what I mean? Because I know many people work Sundays, you know, like...
What I'm saying to you is right now, if you said, okay, Sunday, say 10 to 2, or 10 to 4...
Okay, so you're going to less opening for that, it's going to be possible, yeah.
Yeah, if we can do that right now, it would be better because, I mean, maybe in the summer, because like it's better for sales, so...
I'm just looking at it as...
No, thank you, thank you for the idea, yeah. That's the idea.
Or it could also be by appointment.
Yeah, by appointment only.
By appointment, yeah. Thank you so much.
Am I allowed to take?
Yeah, of course, it's better, thank you.
Which would you like, or...
Yes, Sunday.
Yeah, Sunday to 10 to 2 o'clock, 10 to 2 is going to be good. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Or by appointment, you want to include that?
I think in, or right now, we put by appointment only, but maybe in the summer, if the sales is good, we just open. If we can do 10 to 2, we just open. But for now, just by appointment only, if we do that.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So did we come to a resolution on the, I mean, the only concern I have is that concrete, is this going on?
I think...
They were, I don't remember last time that the other applicant was before us, that there was no discussion about having any kind of other sublease or any kind of, any other business there. So, you know, the fact that the building inspector pointed it out...
Well, I think, I think what we got to do is to, well, they would have to come back if they want to keep that.
Okay.
Okay? But what I would do if they came back, or they were going to keep it for whatever reason that was staying there, I would eliminate, I would bring their amount of autos down to 35.
The previous owner?
I'm saying if the CND construction remains, then the, the amount of area they take up, that would eliminate your parking spaces, you would go from the 53 to 35. In my opinion, that's only my opinion at this time.
And they would have to be on the opposite side, side of the building?
But they'd have to come before us.
But, right, but you would have to come back.
But it's not, it's, it's, excuse me, it's, it's not, they're not subletting it.
No, no, they're not subletting, that's what I understand, but...
Right.
If it stay, if, if Peter Kelly decides that he's going to keep them there or whatever, it still has to come back because it's, it's not been authorized on that lot.
All right, I understand.
So any, any case, it's got to come back. But like I say, it takes, it takes up a lot of your room.
All right.
Okay, any other questions?
As far as the concrete guy, I have my...
Would you come up to the mic and give your name and address, please?
Mike Kelly, West of Mass. Peter Kelly's brother.
Okay.
As far as the concrete, I mean, he's not real, well, he's just packing his trucks on the forms there. If he's, do you want him to, do you want it gone? I guess...
Well, I think what we're saying, if, if, if he decides that he wants to keep it there, he has to come back. he has to come back.
Yeah, I think, you know, like I said, he was, he's in that right rear corner. And it was, just trying to help out his friend because he got thrown out of where he was a couple, two, three years ago. Or he lost the place, whatever it was.
Well, like I said, he would have to come back.
Okay.
And then after that was approved, was approved, you know, if we approve tonight.
Yep.
What we approve.
That's our priority is these guys.
What they're asking for.
Yep.
Okay? It's gonna be a significant change.
Yes.
And that means they're gonna have to come back.
Right.
Because we're going to have to look at the new layout of how everything is gonna be parked and who's where and how much space they really have now versus what they're putting in front of us now.
Right.
You know, it's gonna be a significant enough change at it. Both parties would have to come back.
Yes.
They're not guaranteeing that.
No, no, I understand, yep.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, because if he stays, their, their car count's gonna go down to 35 like you talked about.
Correct. But I, I don't say that, I'm just.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, yep. You have to see how it lays out.
It would, it would depend on what this board decides.
Right, okay. Yeah, we don't wanna, um, hold these guys up because these are the priority. That was just something else Peter was doing down there. Of course, I'm, I know we can't pack the place up right now and move it because I'm sure everything's frozen to the ground. So I don't know if there's any timeframe for that. I don't know.
Yeah, that would, that would come from the building inspector.
Okay. Alright.
Any other questions?
I would just say that I, as far as the concrete company, I mean, that's a completely different code than what we have on this hearing.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, I don't wanna, I, I would, like we said, make sure they're all set and then go back and deal with the other because then it's a completely different, you know, then you're talking about a different code in this book.
Correct, they're two different businesses.
Okay, no, that's fine. It's, it's understandable. Alright, yeah, like you said, we don't wanna hold these guys up. But I know we probably can't call the concrete guy tomorrow and say, you gotta move everything because, you know, I'm sure it's pretty much all frozen to the ground. Um, so if they're, if it, if it's gonna go, it probably needs a little bit of time, like right after the winter's gone by.
Alright, okay.
As long, you know, I don't think, I think Peter's been in good standings with you guys. If he says he's gonna do something, he does it.
No, he is, yeah.
Okay. So just a matter, just because of the timing and it's winter.
Mm-hmm. Like I say, you work that out with the building inspector.
Yeah, okay, that would be the building inspector, alright. And if they want the concrete guy to stay, they, everyone's gonna come back.
You want the concrete guy to stay?
Okay.
You gotta fill out, you know, see the building inspector, he'll go through the same procedures.
Okay.
You'll come back.
Yeah.
And then they'll also have to come back.
I understand, alright.
Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification that it was, it would have to be Mr. Kelly petitioning to have two businesses on that location?
What's that?
If, if, if the concrete's folks were gonna stay, it would have to be Mr. Kelly coming in front of us to petition to have two businesses.
That's correct, yes.
So it's not these folks affected.
No, it's not them, no, it would be Mr. Kelly, correct.
I understand, right, okay.
But like I say, they would have to follow up.
Right.
Alright.
Okay, any other questions?
Can I just, um, just a point of clarification? So with 17 cars for auto repair, auto sales would be 35 and employees, 6 cars?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Because it was 53 for auto sales.
That, that would be if the concrete guy stays.
Yeah, it would be what it was.
Except the 53 becomes 35.
If, only if, only if the concrete doesn't move, only if the concrete company doesn't move.
But that's, that's the zoning official's determination, determination.
That would be another.
But I think right now.
35 is the number I thought.
I think they wanna reduce the, I think the chairman wants to reduce the 53 to 49, take away those four spots.
Yeah, that is correct.
Right. So 49 cars.
49.
49 cars.
Okay.
Does this one on the side, right?
Yeah, the four, the four spots.
The floor that are next to the building to leave access to the, the back.
Yeah.
Alright.
So 17 auto repair parking, 6 employee parking, and 49 used car parking.
That's correct.
That's what it would be.
That's what it would be.
Right. And then if they, Mr. Kelly comes here and decides that he wants to keep the concrete business, then we would reduce that further.
Yeah, we would, we would have to go back, revisit this, and it would be up to you guys to determine.
Well, he'd have to show us how it's split up, how the land would be split up, and then they'd determine from there.
Correct, it would be up to you to determine.
Okay.
How much space each one's taking and what that really leaves for the other one.
Okay.
And what's reasonable. Okay, there is also a list of conditions that with this car lot, and there's a lot of car lots, all of them practically. I'm gonna read the list of conditions that you have to comply with. And one of the new conditions I'm gonna add to this is that these numbers are based on C and D foundations moving.
Okay.
Okay, so that's gonna be a condition added.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the conditions are no four drains are allowed in the building. All hazardous material is defined by the Department of Environmental Protection in accordance with 310 CMR 40-000. The materials shall be handled, stored, and disposed of in accordance with the aforementioned regulations. Cars must be placed not less than 20 feet from the street. All loading and unloading of vehicles to be done off-street for safety purposes. No parts, materials, or tools shall be displayed or stored out of doors. No junk, as the term is herein after defined, shall be stored or maintained out of doors. As used herein, the term junk shall mean any work out, cast off, discarded articles or material which are ready for destruction or which have been collected or stored for salvage or conversion to some use. The business hours for the sale of the used cars will be the same, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and the Sunday hours they allow.
10 to 2 or by appointment only.
Okay, 10 to 2 or appointment only. The petitioner shall conduct the business at all times in a manner so as not to be offensive to the residential abuttes. The granting of this special permit, uh, special authorization shall occur to the benefit of the applicant and shall cease in the event the business is sold or sublet to another party. The permit will be subject to a periodic review by this board or the zoning enforcement officer. If the restrictions noted as part of this granting of this permit are not adhered to or operating in any way offensive or detrimental to the neighborhood, this board would ask the enforcement officer to begin the procedure to rescind the permit. The petitioner shall abide by all requirements of the Department of Public Works in the town of Lunenburg in the state of Massachusetts with respect to ingress and egress at the property. The petitioners must comply with the Town of Lunenburg bylaw regarding signage and any lighting shall not be offensive to the abutting properties. With that, I would ask for a motion.
So I'm sorry.
Or of any other connote.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna go with Mr. Castro, uh, be one of the voting members.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, maybe we could add a point?
Yes.
We've used this line before in other permits, that all, all vehicles must be sticker-ready and ready to be sale, for sale.
Yeah.
You've mentioned this numerous times in many other permits, and I think it should be included in this one?
Yeah, I don't know why it wasn't.
Yeah, I don't know why it wasn't. Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll, uh, make a motion to grant, um, with the conditions as, uh, to this permit with the conditions as read.
Okay. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a motion and a second? With that, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Dave? Tony?
Aye.
And I say aye. With that, the permit is granted. We do wish you good luck with your new business.
Thank you.
Um, I do have a post decision instructions to read. The special permit, uh, is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Non-compliance to such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. And the special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. With that, again, we wish you good luck with your new business.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming tonight. I know you guys will be enjoyed. Thank you so much, thank you for the chance. And I don't know if I can take a picture with you guys, with everybody, for a lesson to build or not? Can do?
Feel free.
Hold on, we received a check for.
Yeah, all you can see is mask.
Thank you so much, guys.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks, we'll have a good night.
Good night, good luck.
Thank you for allowing me.
No problem.
Give my change.
You have to start sometime.
Saturday morning, I hit the floor, put a couple of ones. Like, you still going on, and that's like the hot spot of the world. She goes, you just stay in a condo, they rent the condo from somebody. And I says, well, you got enough cleaning stuff to clean it? She goes, the last person was.
I'm gonna make a motion to the chair.
Second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Good night. We don't wanna halt down later.